Good evening. This is the meeting of the Athens Board of Zoning Appeals. The time is 7:02 and the date is October 12, 2011. It is time I will call the meeting to order. Present tonight are Michelle Drebold, myself Joan Kornansky, Chair, and alternates Lisa Carson and alternate Kay Tousley. Both Lisa Carson and Kay Tousley will be acting as full board members tonight. Also present are zoning administrator John Paskey and Secretary Paul Eschenbacher. The Board operates according to the following procedure. The Chair will name and describe the case. The zoning administrator will state the basis of the objection and any applicable facts or conditions pertaining to the case. The applicant or their representative will give reason why the appellant should be viewed favorably. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the request will be heard. Anyone wishing to speak in general comment will be heard. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be heard. If necessary, the appellant or their representative will offer concluding summary or rebuttal remarks. Testimony from the floor shall be closed. The Board will deliberate and render a decision. According to Athens City Code Section 2307-03B, the Board has power to grant variances from the strict application of the code provided. The variances will not be contrary to the public interest. The spirit of the code is observed. Public safety and welfare are secured and substantial justice is done. According to Athens City Code Section 2309-10C, variances from the code shall not be granted unless the Board finds, based on direct, specific findings of fact, that each of the following conditions have been supported. Practical difficulty and undue hardship. Because of exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions pertaining to a specific piece of property, a literal enforcement of these regulations will result in practical difficulty or undue hardship that is unnecessary to the achievement of the public good. Exceptional circumstances. There are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question or to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties, or classes, or uses in the same zone. Preservation of equal property rights. Literal interpretation of these regulations would deprive the appellant of rights commonly enjoyed by others in the same zone, in the same vicinity, while a granting of the requested variance will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied to other properties in the same zone, in the same vicinity. Minimum variance. The variance granted is the minimum variance required to make possible the reasonable use of the property. Absence of detriment. The authorizing of such variances will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property and will not materially impair the purpose of the zoning code or the public interest. None of a general nature. The condition or situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use of said property for which variance is sought, one or the other, or in combination, is not of so general or recurrent a nature as to make reasonably practicable the formulation of a general regulation for such condition or situation. Any person, resident, or officer, department, or appointed body of the city of Athens agreed by a decision of the Board may petition the Athens County Court of Common Pleas concerning the illegality of the decision. Such petition may be filed within 30 days after the mailing of the decision of the Board to the applicant. Originally, there were two cases scheduled. One case was pulled, so we'll be hearing one case tonight. And that would be case number 1122V-125 Franklin Avenue. Appellant is requesting a variance from ACC 23101 Table B off-street parking requirements to allow rental unit with three tenants with one off-street parking space where three off-street parking spaces is the minimum required. The Board is required to take testimony under oath. Would anyone wishing to speak concerning any item on the agenda please stand? Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you will present to the Board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with the first case.
And only case.
Which is case number 1122V-125 Franklin Avenue. Appellant is Christopher Hall. And appellant is requesting a variance from Athens City Code 23101 Table B off-street parking requirements to allow rental unit with three tenants with one off-street parking space where three off-street parking spaces is the minimum requirement. Mr. Eschenbacher, you want to add anything to what we have available to us?
Well, just a brief history. This house at one point was a legal rental. In the documents I gave you, there's a short stack of previous approved rental permits going back as far as 1991. What happened was that the owners previous to the appellant's bought the house and decided to let the rental permit lapse. Also, three years ago, they got a variance to build a garage five feet from the alley, from the right-of-way when it's supposed to be 12 and 1/2 feet away. Anyway, so that created the situation now where it's no longer rental and it's been no longer rental for more than a year. So if you started up again, you have to meet all current criteria, which is at least two parking spaces or three for three people. And John and another member of the Code Office did measurements up there. And it's their best estimate and opinion that there is only room for one parking space, and that's the garage. That's why they've come here today for the variance. So if you have any questions for us.
It's not possible to sort of scoot in right in front of the property?
We laid it out every possible way you probably could, or possibly could, I should say. And short of getting a survey, we are not able to determine exactly where the property lines at. And all indications that we could tell using telephone poles as the guideline, that the layout of the second car space in front of the garage would stick out into the right-of-way of that alley. So short of them getting a survey to prove us otherwise, we have to go with what we can tell visually and with what we have on plat maps, and that's it.
And if I recall the, I don't know, Paul, if you recall this, but the garage that was rebuilt, there was already a garage here, it just wasn't in good shape.
It was a two-car garage, correct?
Two-car garage that did encroach into the right-of-way. The old garage did. So one of the things they did when they tore it down was to make it a one-car and pull it back off of the property line.
There's no further questions for the Code Officers, then maybe Mr. Hall or his representative could come to the podium and please state your full name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Alny McHale. I reside at 6701 Stevens Circle in Athens. I am the Realtor representing the Halls in their attempt to sell this property. I would like to read a letter to the Board from Mr. Hall and Mrs. Hall, and then I would like to make some additional comments and provide you some photos. As we are unable to make it back to Athens, we are writing to give you a brief overview of why we believe we should be granted our requested variance. There are several reasons we think our request should be granted. One, we purchased the property with the knowledge that it had been rented previously. The property was granted permits throughout the 2000s, some of which included permitted parking for three spaces. We are only requesting two spaces, as that's what we believe the property can currently fit. It would seem unjust to deny us the ability to rent the property when it had been granted many times previously. Two, we believe that the reality of the parking conditions on our property easily accommodate two vehicles. We base this on our experience living in the house and parking two vehicles off the street without any issues. We realize that the property lines fall in an odd way that leaves us short of the required square footage for a second space on a strict reading of City Code. However, when one visits our property, it's easy to recognize that the mapping of the city throughway is inaccurate and poor basis for determining reasonable parking. The alleyway adjacent to our property is not presently connecting Franklin to Grosvenor. In fact, it is more like a shared driveway than an alley. In our time as owners of the house, we replaced the retaining wall adjacent to this area with the effect that the parking area in front of the garage is wider now than it has ever been, including when the property was allowed three parking spaces. Finally, we think denying this variance unduly punishes us, despite the great care and investment we made to the property. In the three years we have owned the house, we invested over $70,000 in improvements and repairs. I'll itemize those shortly. We think it's among the nicest houses on the street. If this variance is denied, we will be unable to rent the property, severely damaging the property's value, which in light of its location is on a primarily student rental street. While we realize that simple financial hardship by itself would not warrant a variance, we think ours is a special case. We think in our time in the house, we were the kind of homeowners Athens should support and encourage. Failure to grant us a rental permit while so many lesser cared-for properties allow them sets bad precedent. We are requesting a variance that will allow a rental permit for three unrelated individuals or a family with two parking spaces. However, if the Board feels strongly that there is only one allowable parking space, we request that you consider granting a variance that allows for three individuals or a family with one permitted space. Sincerely, Christopher and Sandy Hall. Feel free, ladies, if you want to interject questions or comments as I go. Otherwise, I'll hob the floor, maybe unnecessarily.
So I will ask you this question, first question. Could you repeat your name? I'm sorry.
It's Alny McHale.
Alny. Mr. McHale, do you, as representing the Halls, but you say you're representing a rental or a Realtor agency? So are they personally the ones that are renting this out? Do they have contracts out to rent this out to individuals?
They do not. We are trying to sell it. And in fact, it was the Halls' intention when they decided that they would leave the community to see the house sell to a family and to be a family residence. That, however, has not worked out. We have received, since listing the property in the late winter, I believe a total of four offers. And three of the four were contingent on the obtaining of a rental permit. One was not, but those people, those prospective buyers, were not ready, willing, and able buyers. They couldn't perform. Even with the desire to work with them, they couldn't perform. The people who were interested in buying it were interested in the rental prospects of the property, not so much with the intention of quickly converting it into a rental, but with the understanding that they would live in the property during their stay in Athens. One of the gentlemen was a medical student. And then upon his departure, he wanted to have the option to rent the property, knowing that in that location, the highest, best value of the property would be garnered, perhaps with a rental permit. So we've really made a good faith effort to find a ready, willing, and able buyer. And unfortunately, we have only found ready, willing, and able buyers who want the option of renting it.
So what you're saying is the Halls will not be renting this out, so their investment in this property will end, then, correct?
That's right.
Okay. That's right. Anyone else with any questions? So if you want to continue, if you have more to add?
Sure. I think Mr. Eschenbacher accurately summarized the rental permit history of the property. It's really a treasure trove of interesting information. At one point, Don Chamblin, who is now my neighbor and a retired professor of sociology, while he owned the property, wrote a letter to the city and effectively had four occupants in the property. Two of them were his sons, which he argued by virtue of being related to each other only constituted one unrelated person. The parking situation is ambiguous by any means, including the assertion by Mr. Paskey of the location of the right-of-way. In fact, the city does not know where the right-of-way is because the city has not produced a boundary survey. So suggesting that the right-of-way is in one place or another without a survey that has been stamped by a professional surveyor is to argue, I believe, from a position of ignorance. Everybody has their best assertions, and I have pored over the public record. I spent a morning in the recorder's office, and I went back to the original plat maps of the subdivision. And believe it or not, the point of origin on the survey for that entire subdivision is from the middle of a doorway on Carpenter Street. If Jill Thompson ever saw that, she would kick it out because that doesn't meet any sort of conveyance standards. This is all by way of saying that unless there is a survey, we are all just guessing where that alley is, and hence can make no accurate determination about whether parking exists there.
I guess I would have a question about that because this is a shared driveway, per se. And when it appears if someone parked behind that garage, it may be difficult for the vehicles in the adjacent house to use without a little fear, the shared driveway, or alleyway, or whatever.
Right. So I have some photographs outlining what I think would address that concern, if I may.
Thanks.
I just took these photos this afternoon, and you can see an orange outline. That was a spray paint can. What I tried to do was establish that a car such as mine, which is not a small car, can easily fit there. Those particular photos don't necessarily address your concern about the adjacent neighbor, but I think Mr. Paskey can speak to that if he would.
Well, the number-one concern I have is it's not the city's obligation to get the survey done. That is the responsibility of the property owner to indicate where these property lines are, the boundary survey.
Where's that written, John?
It's customary. If the city had to pay for surveys for everybody wanting to build something, the city'd be broke. I mean, we just can't do that. It's customary that the applicant provide us with the survey and with the boundary description and the deed as is part of the request and everything else.
It would be nice, I would agree, to have that. We got an estimate from John Branner, local surveyor, on the cost of a survey. It is $900. And unfortunately, the Halls are no longer a two-income family. Chris Hall is enrolled in the University of Chicago Law School. Only his wife is supporting the family there in a much more expensive real estate market. They have a young child. To pay $900 to prove that they can park in front of their own garage without impeding the city right-of-way creates a financial hardship, which I think is unreasonable for a family. These are not local landlords who own 40 or 50 properties and could absorb that sort of thing. If the city pleads that it doesn't have the resources, then how could they expect a young family to have the resources?
I think that's not what we're debating here.
So I have a question for Mr. Paskey. You noticed that there's a line here that was drawn. Does that meet our parking requirement? We have a certain so many feet by so many feet.
I don't know what they...
When you went out to look at this, to see the space...
That line wasn't there when we went there. We measured it out when we were there. We came 20 foot off of the door.
Off the retaining.
Garage door.
The garage door up here.
And nine foot out from the retaining wall. And as you're looking at it, the left rear bumper of the vehicle there. And based on our best guess judgment of where the property line was at, would stick into the right-of-way a couple of feet.
I'm very familiar with what this looks like, so I've looked at it and walked by it many, many times.
I do appreciate, too, Mr. Paskey referring to it as the best guess, because that's really what it is. I think really...
Well, not if they measured. I mean, there are certain standards for a parking spot, so I'm sure they measured out to there.
Oh, there's no debate about what City Code defines as a parking spot. The debate is whether that space is available without infringing in the city alley, which is an unknown. My point is, and this is, I think, the precise technical nature of the variance, if we insist on a strict interpretation of City Code, then that space is not there. That's why I'm standing here before you on behalf of the owners, saying that if you grant us a variance, saying that this parking space, as outlined, which is about a foot and a half short and maybe six inches too narrow by City Code's definition, if you were to allow that minor modification, then a second spot would be created, and then we could sell this property. Now, I want to go on.
Excuse me one minute. I think that's not the point that we're arguing here.
Please tell me.
We're talking about two off-street parking spaces. This issue of whether the code is within its bounds or has the ability to survey specifically. So I understand what you're trying to say, and I read that in their initial statement that they felt that they had parked there and that that was sufficient. But I think what we want to address here are, we're asking to review the situation for a variance for two off-street parking spaces. I mean, that's what the notice reads.
Well, yeah, I would ask that we sort of engage in a flexible discussion in order to help this family. I want to read another document Mr. Hall emailed to me. Perhaps he gave it to you, but I'd like everybody to hear it. They purchased the house from Michael and Amy Broderick in 2008. I was involved with that sale. I believe they paid about $123,000 for it. Since then, they have added a heat pump. The house had none, I believe, just forced air or gas. And that cost $5,000 with Dean Heating and Cooling. They tore down the old garage, and this is interesting. The cost of that was $20,000 to Starwork Construction and Ben Stoltz Fuss. Mr. Hall asserts that the new garage is actually wider than the old garage, which may surprise many people here, because the old garage was, as I believe Mr. Drebold pointed out, in sorry shape. And it was a two-car dilapidated structure with no door, and it looked like it could come down. That obviously has been improved upon, although only one door has been put on it. So while it appears to be a smaller garage, it is in fact, according to Mr. Hall, larger, and it has been moved out away from any potential encroachment with that city alley. And they had a variance for that before. So that was $20,000. In the summer of 2009, they finished the basement also using Starwork Construction and SJ Plumbing at a cost of $20,000. There was landscaping, which cost $500, a new roof to the property that cost $5,500, and a $12,000 expense for replacing the retaining wall on the sidewalk, which certainly benefits the city and adjoining neighbors. So their total investment in this property is in excess of $185,000. We listed it for sale for $159,000 initially. Frankly, I was very nervous when they said how much they had invested in it, because I didn't believe that the street would bear those sorts of values. And I told them, "Folks, you're going to have to take a loss." And they said, "Well, we understand that. This is a decision we've made, and now we're at a listing price of $149,000, but that is only achievable if we get a rental permit of some kind." If we don't get a rental permit of some kind, this is where the hardship comes, and Ms. Kornansky's comments at the beginning were useful to me, having not heard these proceedings before, that if we can demonstrate that a financial hardship merits special consideration, then the zoning board will hear it. So we're not really debating, I hope at least we're not debating, that the Halls are going to take a severe financial loss. We are now debating the extent of that loss. Will it be a $40,000 loss or a $50,000 loss? And it is regrettably connected to how we define a second parking space. Strict reading of code says 20 by 9 or 18 by 10. Is that right, John? I always get those numbers.
18 by 10, 20 by 9, yes.
But it doesn't say, I believe it doesn't say, please correct me if I'm wrong, that the space has to be strictly rectangular. And in fact, this space that I've outlined is wider at the top than it is at the bottom. Now, if square footage, if the area for parking space is the determining factor, which you could decide, then we actually meet that. Hence, the need not to selectively apply the code.
If I can interject something at this point. You know, the code states specifically, "More loss in value shall not establish a variance." The fact that the Halls have invested a lot into the property in terms of upgrading it and making it more accessible to their needs and attractive to the neighborhood and the neighbors, that's one thing. But value loss is not what the Board can use to assess a variance.
Only, right. But it's not only value loss. It is actually disposition of the house. Now imagine being an out-of-state owner of a property that is now sitting vacant for probably about three months. It costs them money every month in property taxes, insurance, utilities, lawn maintenance, principal and interest payment on the mortgage. Every month, this property remains unsold is a financial loss. They cannot, and again, it's not only a financial loss, they cannot dispose of the property. An adverse decision would mean that they cannot do anything with it. They can't rent it. They can't sell it. What would their choice be? To re-inhabit it? To discontinue law school in Chicago? To move back to Athens? Because otherwise, their asset is unutilizable.
I mean, we are sitting in a market where a lot of houses have been up for sale for quite some time, even in this area, and they're not being sold, so...
I'm well aware of that.
Okay. I'm sure you're well aware of that.
And I just want to point out that of all of the properties I've represented this year and the past 13 years, I can't remember a property that has actually gotten this many offers on it. It is a desirable property largely because of the good decisions the Halls have made. And it's not market conditions that affecting the sale of this. It is use. Highest best use, that's a phrase we use in the business. Appraisers go out and they say, "What is the value of this property?" And they say, "It depends on the highest best use. Is highest best use achieved by using it as a residence or rental? Or is it achieved through business income?" I have to say, I was surprised that this property would, that the highest best use of this property would be used as a rental. I wouldn't think, I wouldn't have thought that would be the... I wouldn't think, I wouldn't have thought that would be the case. I wouldn't have thought that a property of about $150,000 in value would be desirable for investors or, actually, I want to introduce Darlene and Mike Kuzmic, who are here. They are, they would like to buy the property. They have a son who's a graduate student at OU and a younger son who is planning to come to OU.
Okay, well, we'll get to people that want to speak in favor of that ordinance. They can come forward and speak.
Okay.
Okay, that would be the time for that.
Okay. The point that I want to make is that their interest in the house depends on their ability one day to dispose of it in the highest best way. I'm sorry if I'm droning on about this, but I feel very strongly that the Halls have really tried their best, given the restraints of, of everything we've discussed. And we're asking for that second space, which is just a bit shy of a strict reading of code, to be considered that way. At least that would give us a family or two unrelated individuals. I guess I will give up the floor to anyone else who wants to speak. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm happy to come back up and rebut.
Okay, after everyone's, that wishes to speak, speaks.
Outside of a variance being granted for the size of the space that could possibly fit there, which we don't know, because we don't know exactly where the property line is, anything, any space that be deemed, or the second one would count, if it does stick into the right of way, will require revocable license from city council as well, because it does go into the right of way, if it does.
Well, and we've dealt with that case, case like that a year or so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the variance? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Darlene Kuzmic. I am a real estate agent in Columbus, Ohio.
And your address, please.
My address is 7647 Basil Western Road in Canal Winchester, Ohio, suburb of Columbus. We have a son who has attended here four years. He's in his fifth year as a graduate student and scheduled a course for one more. And then we have a sixteen-year-old who will be coming also. Couple of things that I wanted to mention was that if there is a second parking space granted, it would, would relieve some of the congestion that is currently, you know, with the parking that is on the street for any buyer, because any buyer is not going to be a single person, probably. Because if there was only one person or one adult in the family, that would be the only one allowed to park on, off the street. If you had two spaces there, and it was even a couple, then you would have adequate parking for both of those adults off-street. So that's my point with regard to having two, not necessarily for a rental, but for a family as well. Also, let's see, the, the variance would not harm any situation with regard to neighbors at all, because from my recollection at the property, I was there when the zoning board was there as well, or the zoning staff.
Code office, right.
And from my understanding, the width of the space between the retaining wall and the actual, what they visualized as the boundary of the property line, it was short six inches. And the length would have been short a foot and a half or so. And that would be based on the strict definition of how the space would be measured. A minimum of nine with a depth of twenty, or a minimum of ten with a depth of eighteen. Well, if you were to grant the variance based on the total square footage that's required by the code, then that would meet the condition that is required for off-street parking for that, for that particular building. Because the width is eight and a half, but as you can, I don't know if you can see from the picture he gave you, but the width at the top by the garage is as much as sixteen feet. So, and that space is completely open, so that's my, that's my point. The total square footage fits, but the actual definition of nine feet wide did not fit, based on, again, the visual. The city staff was basing their estimate on where the, where the property line was based on the telephone poles that were there. And the telephone poles were apparent, are apparently estimated by the city as being the right boundary line. And if that is correct, then again, the visual, the visual still could not necessarily be accurate, because if that was the right boundary, then the left boundary would still show that all other properties, both below the hill or below Franklin and above Franklin, they're all, all those property owners are intruding on the space of the so-called clearance or alleyway.
And that is correct, and we know that.
On both sides of the street.
On that ten side, they are encroaching as well, that garage to the rear of the house to the north of, to the south of.
And that may have happened a hundred years ago.
Yeah. So, for, and it's my opinion that in, in light of that fact, for this variance to be granted would not be intrusive to any owner or to any, you know, person at all, including the neighbor next door. The neighbor next door already has four off-street parking spaces, and there's still room for the alleyway, alleyway clearance. And as the, as the current owner mentioned, they have been parking there for quite some time and have not had any difficulty whatsoever with any cars coming or going from there. And that alleyway can't be used by anyone but those two homeowners. So it, it's completely obstructed above and below. Another thing that I wanted to point out was, the measurement was taken from the retaining wall, and the retaining, the retaining wall isn't a necessary structure, or isn't a, it happens to be there, but it's not necessary to support the structure that's there. So if the variance was granted with the option of having that retaining wall either removed or moved, then that's something perhaps the owner or us as a future owner could consider.
You're talking about this retaining wall?
Yes. The one that's, I think.
Not the one that's behind the garage?
No, no.
Because you would definitely want that retaining wall.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm talking about the one that would be next to the car.
Okay.
The one next to the house.
Yes, right here.
Right. It is not necessary for the structure. It's only there to support some dirt that's up against the building. So that's my, my comment on that.
Does that house have a basement?
Yes, it does.
Good.
So again, square footage. The other thing that is important, I think, as far as having that rental, is the fact that there is already seventy percent of the street in rentals. And matter of fact, the house just immediately to the left is a rental. So if it's already been a rental and the house next door is a rental, it seems that to me that it should be something that could and should be allowed by the zoning board for highest and best use. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor? Anyone else want to speak in a general? Have anything in general, you want to come to the podium, state your name and your address, please?
Sure, my name is Kevin Aspergrin. I reside at 127 Franklin Avenue. Just to clarify, I'll have a chance to also speak out as an opponent to this. Okay.
So you want to devote?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. I'm glad to have this general time.
All right.
We have lived at 127 Franklin Avenue for nine years now. Myself and our neighbors, including Sandy and Chris Hall and the Brodericks before them, have worked very hard to make the last one-third of Franklin Avenue have a neighborhood feel. I feel that we have been very successful in that endeavor. I am holding here tonight signed petitions from ten of the residents that are directly relate, are directly impacted by this possible decision. These are homeowners. They apologize for not being here themselves, but they have signed documents that I can give to you. Might be one repeat there, because they're very emotional about this. As I said, we, we and the Halls and the rest of the neighbors worked very hard to ensure that the status that they had, their home had as a rental, did not continue. We feel very fortunate to have, you know, this, this neighborhood feel. Two of the individuals that could not be here, two of the homeowners, are not here because one had a baby just in the past seven days, and another family just had a child in the past two weeks. Myself, who live right next to this property, residents have a two-year-old and a five-year-old. So needless to say, we very much see, you know, that the, the variance issue is absolutely connected to the rental issue. I'm proud to say here, under oath tonight, that we had an agreement with the Halls and the neighbors around us, that the neighbors on their other side, who are rentals, when they get too rowdy, they would have us call the cops on their behalf, so that they did not have to get into a shared city alley confrontation with the rental neighbors. That was very important. We stand up for our neighbors, and we have these agreements with neighbors on Grosvenor behind us. It's sort of what we have had to do to ensure that we can have a, a place where we can walk with our kids, we can play out in the yard in the evening, and we can do something. And the, those, the renters that live in the first sort of, you know, two-thirds of Franklin now know that when they get down to that last one-third of Franklin, that it is a family zone, that it is a, a place that it's safe to walk the street, they must slow down, and I appreciate that. My family and others, we are not naive at all. We, we enjoy where we live. We knew moving in, that we were moving into an area with rentals, with student rentals. It was a choice that we made, and we knew exactly what we were moving into, as did Sandy and Chris Hall. So they knew specifically when they moved in that their house no longer had the, the rental status as with the Brodericks before them. You know, it's, so you have the sort of ten petitions from, from neighbors there. We like where we live, and we really see no need for a variance to be granted so that this can be turned into a rental. Again, we've worked very hard not to do anything against those houses that already have rental status. Again, we appreciate that, we like the, the environment that we're in, but if we have a residence, you know, we are not in favor, as are those ten, I believe it's ten, neighbors there that feel the same way. You know, the, the property at 125, and I will say this on record also, it was very rare that Chris, Sandy parked in the garage, that Chris Hall would park in that driveway. There is simply not room. He would park on the street every once in a while, occasionally, he would park in that driveway. When he did though, and I don't know if the pictures reflect that, you have to take your car, get it all the way up to the front of the garage, you have to get it all the way over to the side, and you can get out of the car. You can get out of the car. A passenger cannot get out of the car. You cannot get around the car in front of the garage, and you cannot get up the steps to go in the back door. You have to go in the front door. Okay? And still, the back car, you know, part of the car is still hanging out into that, that common area. But the main message that my neighbors wanted me to bring tonight is that we have a serious, serious parking problem on Franklin Avenue. And we know what it is. It's rentals, there's rentals there, that's, that's fine, and you know, that's, that's not going to change. But that last one-third of Franklin, we already have a serious problem that if you come in at eight, eight-thirty, nine o'clock at night, you are going to have to keep moving over to Evans, maybe on the Spring, and you actually go around the corner and park on East State Street. Right? There is also, you know, I think it's important to point out that in front of 125, there are three on-street parking places. And then begins a section of, it's probably eighty, ninety yards due to a garage from the Kramers that live on East State Street that comes back. And then there is a, a fire hydrant. And I think, you know, we as, as neighbors, we definitely appreciate that we have a fire hydrant out front, but I cannot tell you the number of times, maybe I should have been a little bit more diligent, it is on a weekly basis that we even have to call the police to get cars ticketed and towed in front of a fire hydrant. On a weekly basis. Now, if you want to talk about expense, you know, and I, I think it was, it was very clearly demonstrated by the Realtor, that the Halls had the means to afford $900 or whatever else if they can put $70,000 into a home. My wife and I, we saved for years to widen our driveway a tad at the top, because cars would block our driveway on a yellow line, and we could not get out. We'd be captive, sometimes for hours. So, you know, we, my point is, we have a serious parking problem, and I, I see these issues of granting a variance directly related to this then becoming a rental, causing more problems in a part of Franklin Avenue that we do not consider to be a rental street. We are proud to say that the last one-third of rental really has a, a neighborhood feel that we're proud of. So that is the end of my general comments, unless anybody has some questions for myself.
I think you pretty much transitioned into the opposition. I think it would be hard for us to say that was general. We started out that way.
I would like to add, though, that if the applicant was to prove through survey or whatever means, that there is an adequate parking space there, and then they were to apply for a two-bedroom rental, it could be a rental as a two-bedroom. And there's nothing that anyone could do about that, if they proved that that second space was legitimate.
Right, that was the issue that we dealt with on the category.
I just clarified.
But that's not what we're dealing with, right?
Right.
Correct?
I'm sorry.
They would have to come back with that.
No, no, if they wanted to do a two-bedroom with two adequate spaces, then it's an acceptable rental.
Oh, you mean after their survey?
After the survey, yes.
So we would, we would post.
Get the survey, prove that the space is adequate, request a license or a rental permit for two.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
The two parking spaces. It could be a rental, based on two and two, as we say. So just wanted to clarify that. So.
Well, thank you.
Okay, so I'll come back for the opponent time, right?
If you'd like.
Those are just comments.
I would like to see.
Well, give someone else a chance.
Oh, absolutely. That's right, I'll come back up.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak in a general nature?
I have some questions. Is that permitted? I thought you asked questions.
Well, if you are, you're going to speak for general?
General.
Then come to the podium, please. State your name and address.
I, I have some questions. I'm sitting here listening to what they're saying, and that's why I wanted to.
Wait till you get up there.
I'm Joanne Prisley, and I live at 40 Grosvenor Street. And I've never been on the Board of Zoning Appeals, but I have been on the Planning Commission, and I've been very active in the community and the Neighborhood Association. And my block on Grosvenor Street was a lovely block, and it's more and more a rental. But I have a couple of questions about this. I was sitting there, listening to them, and they're not, and I wrote them down in my nice book, I didn't want to do that, but there are one or two things, and maybe one of you or Mr. Paskey could answer this. When did that get to be an alley that they're talking about?
When, it's always been platted as an alley, and it goes all the way through to Grosvenor. And the ability to abandon it would be.
But they can't drive up and go through the back, can they?
No, no, it's a, it's a.
So it's been used, and in actual fact, it's been used as a, a shared driveway.
Correct.
Which is very common on those, both Grosvenor and Franklin.
And it's my understanding through Engineering Public Works, that it could probably never be abandoned, because there's a major sanitary line running through there.
Yeah, and there, but it's never been used, really. Okay, that, that was a question I had. The other one was, they kept talking about the garage replaced, a single-car garage replaced a double-sized garage. I live on Grosvenor Street, and I have this lovely brick garage and this lovely long driveway, and it's supposed to be a double garage, but that was in 1931. It was a double garage. And I think the one up there, you need to talk, think about it, it was always a single, it sounds like it was a double garage, but there's no way in modern times it could be. The other one I had was, who's in charge of appraisals? Isn't, isn't the decision about appraising property the counties?
For tax assessments?
Yeah, well, the county, the property, property lines are, it's a county thing. When you, if I go and say I have a problem with my, with my property, do I not have to go through the county?
To have it appraised, or to have.
Well, to, I, I have to have it appraised, and then they're going to decide about it.
Right.
So it isn't really anything that the city does?
No.
Okay, that was another thing I wanted to be clear about.
I mean, we, we'll go out and try the best we can to find out.
Yeah, but it's still, it's, it's really not, the city can't pay for it, it's not their business.
Right.
Okay. I had one question about using it as a rental for, and I know this because I have, I'm surrounded by three houses that parents bought for their child. by three houses that parents bought for their child, and then they, the child graduates and the brother and sister graduates, and then we have this house on our hands. And my question for here is, if you have a student who's a graduate student, and your next child is 16, the 16-year-old cannot live, when the 16-year-old is old enough to be a freshman, they cannot live out for two years. They cannot live in the community until they're juniors. So that house, after the one graduates, or the graduate student graduates, is going to be rented to somebody else, and that's when the flaw comes in. When your own child is there, it's taken care of, but anyway, this is my question. I'm just asking you these questions. I've lived on Grosvenor Street for all those years and nobody's going to drive me out. I like it, it is really nice, and I appreciate that, and I took a walk down to look at this house today. I went down Franklin to look at it, and two of my good friends lived in that house, and it's been there since at least, well, I know it was there in 1940 and it was probably there before, and it was a beautiful house, and I would hate to see it used as a rental. And everybody says, well, when we rent it out, we're going to take care of it, but they don't. I've gone through enough of those houses, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in a general? And you have to be truthful about this. If you want to speak in opposition, we're getting to that. You were fine.
I have a question that could be answered if I could read the letter that Mr. Hall has written for us to, that was read today by the Realtor. Could I have access to that?
Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition?
Do you want to read the letter first, or...
Yeah, I would like to read while somebody else speaks.
Right, that's what I thought you were doing. Okay. Are you coming up again? Please state your name and your address.
Of course. Those are just general comments.
Are you trying to wear us down?
My name is Kevin Asperger, I reside at 127 Franklin Avenue with my family. I just wanted to go on record tonight that in addition to myself and my family being against this variance request, I did submit a number of our neighbors that are also residents of the street, and I want that to be on record, that what we are really opposed to is a variance that is going to put any additional cars onto Franklin Avenue. So, thank you very much.
We do have nine, he submitted nine documents, signed documents, and I received two emails, actually in opposition to the variance, which I forwarded to John Paskey. One of those individuals has signed one of these documents, and I think I would, I'll read, they're all the same, they all say the same, they'll sign them at different addresses. So if I could, I'd like to read these into the record, and then I'd like to read this email from an individual who had not signed one of these documents. There are now 10 documents, and the document states, "October 10, 2011, petition against variance request at 125 Franklin Avenue, Athens, Ohio, 45701. City of Athens zoning board, I, and 10 different residents of Franklin Avenue oppose the variance request for additional street parking being at 125 Franklin Avenue. I also oppose the request for this property to be turned from a family residence to a rental property. Parking is already too much of a problem on Franklin Avenue and creates an overflow effect onto Evans Street, Spring Street, and East State Street as we search for parking. Additionally, we appreciate our neighborhood community and culture that has been created over the past 12 years and do not need to see another family-zoned resident turn into a rental. I'm aware of the City of Athens zoning board meeting taking place October 12, 2011 at 7:00 PM, but in move my attendance, please let this signed petition be a view of my record. Thank you." And then I'll give all these to Paul, and he can record them.
Can I just see the last one? The one which is...
Oh, sure. And then I would like to read this one email of an individual that had not signed one of these statements.
Are you going to read all the addresses? You think that should be important, to read the addresses in and names? No?
I don't know. John, can you include those in the record without me reading them, or do you need to...
They'll be part of the record, yeah.
Right, they'll all be part of the record. And this is from Barry Dilly, who lives on 234 East State Street. She says, "Please forward to John Paskey my opinion on a request for a parking variance to..." Well, she says 129, but I believe she means 125. "There are far too many cars in the area now and not enough parking places. I live on East State Street, right in front of 125, and I'm aware of the congestion in this area. In addition, I support a larger portion of owner-occupied homes, helping to integrate students into a more peaceful, friendly neighborhood." Barry Dilly. So, put that with the packet. Now, is there anyone...
Her backyard backs up to the sort of...
Right, exactly. That would like to speak in opposition? State your name and address.
Bill Siffranik, 34 Grosvenor Street. I'm here on my own behalf, I'm part of a larger neighborhood, and parking in one area affects parking in another, and on that basis, I oppose it. But more particularly, I'm here on behalf of my friend and general neighbor, Judith Rue, who just couldn't be here tonight, and she has a letter, and I'd like to hand that out if I might.
She was sent as part of the...
Right, she was in the packet of petitions?
No, I don't believe she was.
No, she was in the people who were sent, notification.
Particularly important that she is one of the people that was in the notification.
Would you like me to read this out loud?
If you would, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Dear Board of Zoning Appeals, I write to oppose the variance request. First, I want you to know that it's been some time since the house has been a rental. The owners immediately before the present owners also occupied the property themselves. I know because they moved immediately adjacent to my property. The present owners may have improved the property, but I believe the preceding owners had already done so to a considerable extent. Perhaps more central to the variance request, parking is a problem in the neighborhood. Mr. Hall writes in point three of his narrative that a family or occupants would have to negotiate how they organize their vehicles precisely. Because of that, tenants would be likely to park on the street in order not to have to negotiate how they park their vehicles. A variance contributing at all to the existing parking problem is detrimental to the neighborhood. The contention is advanced in point six of the narrative that without the variance, the property will not be unrentable, will be unrentable and practically unsellable, certainly would not render the property unsellable. Not only the property, but the area has improved in the last few years. Two families in succession have followed it to a suitable property to purchase. The market may or may not make the property difficult to sell at this time, but clearly it could be sold. The owners of the property say that they are not asking for a special privilege, but they are, they want to provide less parking than the law requires. I request that the board deny the variance. Judith, sincerely, Judith W. Rue. Would you like to make any more comments?
Just very briefly, on the survey issue, ability to afford is really not the question. Usually, the burden of producing evidence is on the proponent, the plaintiff, if you would. The people asking for the variance are the proponents. According to their duty to provide, the survey falls upon them.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in opposition? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Sam Gertan, I live at 20 Elmwood Place in Athens, and I would just like to start by saying, please do not let more cars park on Franklin Avenue. And the reason for my argument is it's a waterfall effect. The cars on Franklin Avenue fill up and go around to East State Street in front of Ms. Dilly's house and Mr. Kramer's house.
Ms. Rue's house?
No, Ms. Rue's on, she's on Franklin.
No, she's on State.
The whole way down State Street. And then there are a lot of rentals on State Street, and then what happens is those cars come over to Elmwood, and the first 25 to 50% of the first block on Elmwood become lined on both sides with cars, making it a channel of one lane that you can go in and out of. So when I turn off of East State Street onto Elmwood, I have to go down this funnel, and people leaving Elmwood, we come head-to-head, and one person has to back up. And it's been that way for years. I moved onto Elmwood in 1998, and the house that I lived in previously was at 137 Franklin Avenue, which is roughly four doors down from the property that we're talking about. And I lived on Franklin Avenue for two years, and I had to leave because parking was impossible. I would come home from the grocery store, and I would have to put my flashers on and unload my groceries into my house, and then I would have to circle the block like the buzzards that fly above until I can find a spot to put my car. So that's, that's the first point that I would like to make. And then I made notes here that I would like to make some other points. Please don't accept the argument that the city taxpayer has to pay for a survey. I think that's absurd that that would even be suggested, that I have to pay for somebody else to have a variance. Please don't do that. Also, the first, the first point in the letter that was read this evening is, it sounds to me like the point is being made that at one point in time, this property was a rental and it had multiple cars parked there. It lost that privilege, and if we give it that privilege back to this house based on that argument, then what's to stop every landlord in town from coming in here and saying, in 1850, this property was able to do X, Y, and Z, can we please do that again? So please don't accept argument number one in the letter that was read this evening. And then, argument number three, when it's read, it made me believe that the variance unduly punishes us despite the great investment. In the three years we've owned the house, we've invested, it says... It made me believe that their only option is to rent the house. And I personally believe this house is very sellable. The Realtor said tonight that it's had more activity than many of the houses he's dealt with. So I think that if the owners want to sell the house to an owner, that that could very realistically happen. So those are my overreaching points for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else care to speak in opposition? Then I think if you would like to come back and speak, have any rebuttal comments to make.
I want to say that I respect everyone's position, and I appreciate the civil nature of the discourse. I obviously don't agree with some of what's being said. But to put a fine point on it, I think we need to drop back and look at the flexibility that the Halls are bringing to this proposal. They are not insistent on a variance that would allow three unrelated people. What they need is something that will accommodate some sort of rental, either a single family or two unrelated people. For that, we need a minimum of two off-street parking spaces. If you grant the variance for that second spot in front of the garage, the problem is solved, and then all of the concerns about the miserable parking situation on Franklin, State, and Elmwood is no longer an issue. If the property is rentable to two unrelated adults and they have two off-street parking spaces, then they are not contributing to an on-street parking problem. If they are, I would recommend that the interested parties grieve to city council or the appropriate authority to revisit their parking regulations on streets like Franklin. Instead of chalking tires every 24 hours, maybe they should do it more frequently if unwanted people are abusing the privilege to park there. I understand it's frustrating not to be able to maneuver in front of your homes, but I don't think that is a compellingly good argument to force a substantial monetary loss on a particular individual.
Mr. McHale, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
You're a businessman. This couple wants to buy a house for their two sons. I'm thinking that we know what the law is in Athens, which is, I would say, two unrelated, if you want to say there's two spots, but there's going to be a third person there in the house. How many bedrooms does this house have?
It has three.
And you said the basement was finished.
That, that has been finished into a bedroom. Whether that meets the city code's definition in terms of egress or fire purposes and the location of the window, I'll leave to Mr. Paskey to determine.
So from a business model, if I was potentially looking to buy this property and rent it and not pay attention to laws, I might be able to put four people in that house.
It's R1.
I understand that. I live in an R1 where there's rentals all around, so I understand what the law says and what happens, which is, I think, something that we on the board are faced with consistently when we get into these situations, because we have to think about these things.
The, the fact that some people break the law and abuse whatever rental permit that they're granted is lamentable, but to impose a decision on one particular person who doesn't have that intention, that, those parties being the Kuzmics here, seems to me to project into the future, and to project into the future with certainty. I can't do that. The, again, I would like to clarify that the Halls, in their letter and in their conversations with me, said, "Auni, we are reasonable people. We don't have to have a permit for three, although that is what numerous interested buyers have requested. We said, let's be reasonable, everyone. There is not parking up there for three people." It, it looks like an unwinnable request, but what I believe is more reasonable is to grant the variance for two, especially given the house's previous history, would still be a reduction from what it was before. Now, I want to speak to Mr. Gertan's point that if, if you grant this variance, it might lead to a torrent of other property owners saying, well, my house was used as a rental in the 1850s, he said, and I want to reinstate the permit. There is a fundamental difference between a house that has been used as a rental, permittedly used as a rental in recent history, and one that has been used as a rental at any point in its history, and I think reasonable people can differ on, on that.
We really did take his comment tongue-in-cheek when he spoke of the 1800s and the rental.
Well, I could, I could imagine some property owners, without naming names, who might make those sorts of claims.
The record, you want us to...
We've probably heard from them.
With respect to Mr. Asperger's concern and that of some of the neighbors on the, on the last third of the street, I get it. I really get it. I really get it. And I think you'll acknowledge that the halls were excellent neighbors and did not want to alter the composition of the street. But in point of fact, they are not altering the composition of the street. The last third, the thirty percent of the people who are owner occupants are in the minority. And whether I agree that the street needs to be more owner occupied or, or have fewer rentals is not really the issue. It's not, because we can't determine how other people, uh, get to dispose of their The, the zoning board can't. The neighbors cannot. We cannot, we, we, everyone's sentiments ought to be factored in. And I know that there's some people in the room who feel very strongly about that. And again, I get that. And it's not a matter of passion for me. Uh, this is a matter of representing the client's financial interests. It sounded too like there was a climate of fear and loathing of renters. And I know that some of them have been bad neighbors. We know that. Everyone who's lived in Athens knows that. However, again, I think that is an argument for referring those bad neighbors to the appropriate authorities. We mustn't punish landlords for their tenants' behavior. The realtors in the room, I think, are in a unique position. There are two of us to comment on property values. And here a paradox emerges. I think that while some of the neighbors, Mr. Asperger among them, would take the position that granting, uh, this permit would in fact damage their property's values, uh, I think the realtors in the room, uh, who are trained in appraisal would say that when you observe the highest best use of a property, that's when property values go up. And in a market that has a deflating effect on property values, people who are concerned about their own may actually be inadvertently damaging theirs. I don't want to spend too much time, uh, more time talking about the right-of-way, because as I said, if you'll simply grant a variance for two off-street parking spaces, then we don't have an issue with all those parking issues. But not, uh, we're not suggesting that any sort of permanent structure be put in the city alley so as to create an encroachment for the rest of time, like the numerous structures that Mr. Paskey grants are probably in the city right-of-way. And nobody is gonna go around asking people to rip down their garages or move their houses over a few feet. We are talking about a space. Uh, and, and there's nothing permanent in the nature of the space. If the city ever needs to access the sanitary sewer, they can just ask the person to move the car. In the worst scenario, the car could be towed, the sewer could be dug up. Uh, in the fifteen years that I've, I've been familiar with one twenty-three and one twenty-five Franklin, because a close friend owned one twenty-three, uh, I've not known that, uh, sanitary sewer to be dug up. I have known on his request, uh, the owner of one twenty-three, that the city come in and maintain what they say is their property. With respect to, uh, Mr. Sefranik's assertion that the burden of proof on these situations be, uh, be the burden of the proponent, uh, I can't stand toe-to-toe with Mr. Sefranik on legal matters, but I, I'll address it informally. If, if I have a, if I have a dispute with my neighbor about, uh, where the property lines are, if I believe that my neighbor is trespassing, uh, on my property, I would first have to establish where my property lines are. You can't have trespass without having boundaries. If the city is saying that a parking space will trespass there, let them establish their own property lines. That's a legal argument. Nobody's terribly impressed with that, but I want to make it anyway. Finally, um, Ms. Prisley's, uh, question about the auditor. The auditor, uh, conducts appraisals of every parcel of real estate in the county. Uh, they don't, uh, survey or have anything to do with determining property lines. I'm not sure if that's what, yeah, the nature of your question was.
That's where you get your information on your property lines. They don't do it for you. They do do it for your taxes, but it's registered actually in the reporter's office. If you want to see your property lines, you go to the reporter's office.
That's right. You can look on the deeds for the legal description.
And then all the math is in there.
That's right.
And we've got a copy of the math, but that'll pinpoint the corner.
Oh, yeah, but it's not your responsibility for the counties.
Right. Uh, finally, let me, let me summarize with, with the following. Um, and that is to, uh, ask the, the board to find in favor of the variance, notwithstanding the legitimate concerns of, of the neighbors. Frankly, and I'm gonna speak from my own voice here, that I, while the concerns are legitimate, um, and the assertion that the property could sell to a property owner at some price, a low one, is very uncompassionate. If it comes right down to it, uh, if a group of neighbors told you, "Yes, you can sell your property, but only at this discounted price. We're very sorry, but we're concerned about the quality of our neighborhood." I have a hard time telling people they need to take a severe financial loss. And again, I, I know that can't be the only criteria here, but you can't even sell your house for the next however long it takes because of these other considerations. Dollars and cents are very important to people, uh, these days. And, uh, again, I respect everyone's right to disagree. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I think we'll close the floor. And, yes?
I, I do have four quick points to make, if I may.
Uh, one minute? Do it in a minute? Just state your name again.
Darlene Kuzmic. Oh, I'm, we're from Columbus.
Okay.
Um, four quick points. Uh, one, um, the halls, he, he mentioned that the halls were with them from a standpoint of being, uh, uh, congruent in trying to, you know, fight off some of the issues regarding rentals. And now, of course, the halls are on the other side, because the halls are not able to sell their property to a private individual. The only interest and the repeated interest that the realtor has received on the property has been from an investment standpoint. Number two, uh, the argument for granting this space seems to me, um, it's been presented time and time again to that tonight, that it, that their arguments against giving the space would, is, is actually their argument for granting the space, because it gives you an additional authorized space off the street. So all the arguments that are supposedly against actually work for granting the space. Uh, the third issue is, um, it has always been used as a shared driveway. There is no actual, uh, if, if that extra foot and a half by six inches was granted as a variance for this particular parking space, it would not interfere with anything whatsoever to do with any of the neighbors anywhere. It would allow for the additional space of one authorized person off-street, which they don't have now. And the fourth thing is that the garage is twenty feet deep. It has a nine-foot garage door, and that's what they use to count the ones, the one-car space. Um, if, if you did allow the variance, if you could allow the variance with a requirement, perhaps, uh, and that might be to move the retaining wall, which would give the nine feet rather than eight foot six inches. Uh, another possible requirement could be to, um, remove or expand the door of the garage, because if the door was ten feet wide, then the garage would only need to be eighteen feet. And if that, if it was eighteen feet and then that additional space in the back could move up the two feet, then you wouldn't need the, the variance at all. So I'm saying that if you would look at what some of the other options are to make and help us create the additional second space, it would be beneficial for the community rather than detrimental. Thank you.
Thank you.
One minute, please? I want, I want a rebuttal, too.
Okay, everybody gets one minute and I'm timing. Come to the podium, 'cause we really need to, um...
Kevin Asperger, one twenty-seven Franklin Avenue. I just want to be clear. We were making no argument whatsoever that, that we're, we're trying to argue in their favor. There is simply no room for a car up there. It's as simple as that. Three of the, the people who have looked serious, most people who look at that house at one twenty-five come next door and talk to us. They wander by the next night. The issue, they want to know what's really going on here? What's going on with the illegal duplex at one fifty Grosvenor? Where they put four people in and they're trying to get twelve? What's going on with the neighbors at one fifty-two Grosvenor who are upset about the noise from all the renters? Okay? It is going to overflow. If, if we put more cars on the street, it is going to be a problem. We don't need any more rentals. Thank you.
Thank you. One minute? No, we have. I think we're gonna have to call it. If you want to do one-minute rebuttal, then I think we're good to go.
Okay, I have information that might be super helpful in this.
Could you please come up to the dials, please?
Just state your name.
Sam Gertens. Through community hearsay, which the realtor may or may not be able to answer this question, but, uh, my understanding is that there is a written offer on the property for seven thousand dollars less than the current offer, and the offer that's seven thousand dollars less is, uh, family occupied. It's not, they're not asking for it to be a rental. That's my point. And if the realtor could either confirm or deny that under oath, I would be grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one rebuttal and then we're closing the floor.
Auni McHale, I, client confidentiality forbids me from discussing offers with other than the parties involved. I would like to, but I have my license to think about. I hope you respect that. It sounded like Mr. Asperger's last comment was a very frustrated comment about the nature of the abuse in the system. Again, I think that should be referred to perhaps city code, uh, and, and allow for more robust enforcement. But if, I, I would like to, I'd like to restate that the Kuzmics and the halls approached this body in good faith, saying, "We want two parking spaces." And I did park my car there. I did park my minivan there. It wasn't terrifically hard to do so either, and I have, uh, pictures to prove it. It's, it's simply unjust to punish one particular person who approaches you in good faith because other people have abused their own situations.
Thank you.
If I may, you get, you cannot do a variance request on the smaller second parking space, 'cause we do not know what the accurate size is without the adequate survey.
No, we have no intention of doing that.
And, and even if you did, uh, then it encroached in the right-of-way, it still takes revocable license through city council, which you can't grant. That's them. So that can't even be recognized.
Okay, so we're just bearing, going forward with what we have in print. Okay, would someone like to propose a motion?
Excuse me. Just a question of clarification. Uh, just a question of clarification.
The floor is closed.
Oh, do you know what the square footage total is?
Of what? Eighty square feet?
No, how many square feet the actual space is. Could that be clarified? I was just curious.
Not without a survey. I mean, we, we know what's required by code, hundred and eighty square feet. But I'm not going to sit here and say that it can be seven foot wide at the bottom and sixteen at the top. That vehicle doesn't change shapes when it pulls into that spot, so...
Michelle, you're gonna propose.
I propose that we grant a variance for one twenty-five Franklin Avenue, zoned R1, case number eleven dash twenty-two V. To allow for off-street parking requirements for a rental unit with three tenants. And I guess, are we saying two off-street or one off-street? One off-street parking space, where three off-street parking spaces is the minimum requirement.
Second. We don't have to say ACC twenty-three-ten?
Do you want me to say that? Do you want me to write down?
Well, you probably should, just read it straightforward.
Requesting a variance from ACC twenty-three point ten point zero one, table B, off-street parking requirements. To allow rental unit with three units, tenants with one off-street parking space, where three off-street parking spaces is the minimum requirement.
Another second. Do you want to have any discussion before we read the findings, go through the findings?
My only discussion would be the last point that the potential buyer mentioned. If, if, if they want to increase the size of, buy the property without a rental permit and increase the size of the, the, um, garage or whatever they want to do.
And then come back? Well, that's their business.
They can do that.
Yeah.
Um, and anybody can move into a house. I mean, if their sons want to move in, getting into the whole idea of a rental permit, as we well know, that goes with the property.
Right, correct.
So if they want to still purchase the property, they have the right to purchase that property.
Right, with, without the rental permit. So we're ready for the findings?
Yes.
Practical difficulty and undue hardship because of exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions pertaining to a specific piece of property. A little, literal enforcement of these regulations will result in a practical difficulty or undue hardship that is unnecessary to the achievement of public purpose. Well, I would think since the halls provided for the Brodericks, that, uh, in the Brodericks, are individuals who purchased it from whoever owned it as a rental. They gave up the permit, then they were able to sell it to the halls. I think that it shows that there is the practical difficulty and undue hardship in terms of use of the property, um, is not an issue.
I would also add that they made the choices to upgrade to the situations, that they, they made those choices.
Well, it still didn't change the situation of, uh, practical difficulty.
Right.
Right, correct. Exceptional circumstances. There are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question or to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties or classes or uses in the same zone. Well, they do have one parking place and, um, the property...
And a garage.
And a garage can be used as owner occupied. Uh, and, uh, and, and so I think...
And that's how the property has been used for the last two...
For the last ten years, at least a decade. So, um, I think it's possible to continue that. Preservation of equal property rights, little interpretation of these regulations, who try the appulant of rights commonly enjoyed by others in the same zone, same vicinity. Only granting the requested variance will not confer any, any special privilege that is denied to other properties in the same zone, the same vicinity. Well, many, the neighbors here, um, people have come forward, I guess that might fall under detriment, but, um, um, other people, um, seem to be, um, owning and occupying property in the neighborhood. There are difficulties in that whole area. We've heard other cases.
It's a mixed use.
It's a mixed use, but with the parking situation. Um, and, uh, people seem to accommodate and they had the opportunity to purchase it without the, without the variance and then make the accommodations for creating a second parking place. So, um, they have the opportunity to make those changes. Minimum variance, a variance granting is the minimum variance required to make possible the reasonable use of the property. Uh, well, reasonable use, owner occupied, they have a parking place as it stands right now. It's usable. Absence of detriment, authorizing of such variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property and will not materially impair the purposes of zoning code of public interest. Well, we have...
We have public interest here this evening. Quite a bit of public interest.
Yeah, basically from the ten petitions we received and several people that came to speak. None of a general nature. Um, we've heard some, but not that many. So I would say... We've heard some, but not that many, so I would say, no, not of a general nature. Michelle, ready to call for a vote? Michelle?
No.
Lisa?
No.
Kay?
No.
And I don't know. So the variance is denied. Possibility of purchasing a property, making adjustments that you're discussing, you seem to be pretty familiar with what could be done, and then having two parking places and then being allowed to have two tenants, two individuals, would be possible.
Well, in R1, you can have three unrelateds living together.
Yeah, you need parking places.
You need a parking.
You need parking. So they have two parking places. They could change, they could apply the code after they've made adjustments and proceed with the property in that direction. So if there's no other business, then I think we need to... Somebody want to make a motion to...
Right.
Prove the minutes?
I didn't either. I don't think I've seen them.
We can always wait until next month.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, because I sent out an email to everyone asking...
I swear up and down, I sent them out because I checked my out mail and there was one.
I think you did. I think I reviewed them.
I did not look at them. I couldn't find them.
We can wait till next week.
We can wait till next week. That they...
They will note that we'll approve whatever month that was, September's minutes at November meeting.
And then there needs to be...
Or at least review them.
At least review them.
There needs to be review of the next, when the next meeting is because that is Election Day.
All right.
And that needs to be clarified.
As of right now, it's Tuesday, November 8th. But I'll look into that, if we're allowed to have a public forum on Election Day. I'm not quite sure about that.
If it does turn out that we can't have a meeting on that Tuesday night, then you guys need to figure out, once again, an alternative night because we do have a full agenda. I don't think it would be good to wait until December.
No.
Because why are we gone? No, I'm not kidding.
Well, there's actually, there's five cases floating right now. One of them has asked to continue theirs until December, but if for some reason we don't hear the four November cases, then we have piled up five from December.
Oh, I thought we could only hear four.
That's the rules you guys do, so, but that's your rule, so...
It's not written in stone.
Okay, well, then I move that way during the meeting.
My second.
Meeting adjourned.